I don't think they can see us.
I can see you.
You can see us?
I see you and Tim.
Like the normal owl?
So it's fine. It's recording at those.
So we're just not going to YouTube?
It just won't, it won't be instant to YouTube.
It did say recording in progress.
Yeah, we're recording. Thanks for trying.
He can hear us.
Is Brian on? All right, are you ready?
So. Call this regular, regular session, the Red Oak City Council, the order this Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 5:30 PM here at the Red Oak Fire Station. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. It's going to show up on YouTube maybe a little later, but it is on and I know some people are on. Um, also please just silence your phone if you would to make sure we don't have any disruptions. If you do have to take a phone call, please just exit to the hall and back. In vocation. Let's see, is our pastor online or you'll see him? Alan Dean, is he on? No?
No.
All right, so we'll skip to number three, pledge of allegiance.
You betcha.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Bills?
Yes, here.
Bright off?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Heat break?
Here.
And Bradley's absent. Number five, who will be agenda? Lester?
Second.
Right off. We'll call.
Bright off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Heat break?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. Did we, do we have anything that's not on here? Number seven is public comments. We do have a three minute limit and you must sign in when you have any online. Number eight, department and community reports. And number A is parks and then after that will be our community heart and soul. So Adam, thank you for joining us.
Hey, thanks for having me.
Great report.
For those of you who are aware, I'm at Vanderblie, I'm the part superintendent here for Red Oak. Uh, just kind of go through our quarter here for July through October. I'll stay mainly with the park side this time. A month ago, we were here with Cool and reported on that with Georgiana and myself, so. Uh, I'll hit kind of the highlights. Leaving all the Monday details of the mowing and turning in all nice fun stuff that we do every day, that day in, day out, so. Uh, I kind of broke it down a little different this time to a couple of different categories as far as each, what each one is. Uh, just general maintenance operations, regular mowing, uh, street partners, this is with boom mowing of like Cherry Creek here or Cherry, Cherry Street. Uh, they mow that a couple of times a year for us. Uh, we tried something new this year with weeds in the playgrounds. Trying to get away from chemical use a little bit, we tried using a torch. It works in small doses. Um, it's not ideal. It's really time consuming and it's a lot of effort to get a little bit of, uh, pill back on some of those weeds. So we'll be looking to, uh, next spring, try to do something a little different. Keep researching things, see if we can get something a little more effective. Try to stay away from the chemical side of things on the playgrounds and that sort of thing. Uh, spot sprayed flower, uh, flower beds out here at Legion Park. Uh, we had, for whatever reason, this year, a large influx of Canadian thistle. Uh, we've kind of determined it was through a bag of mulch that we had. It was only in one of our flower beds, none of the other flower beds had it, but we had it really bad, so. Uh, we spot sprayed that area this year. Something we hadn't really seen in the past, so it was kind of new for us. Uh, tree planting or tree work and planting, minor tree service did remove two trees from us from College Park. Uh, cemetery staff assisted with removal of trees in Kelly and Chautauqua. Uh, the miners came back and they cleaned up 13 tree stumps for us this fall. We have another, I think, three more that we took down with the cemetery department. That will get cleaned up here, um, this winter yet, so this fall. Um, we did plant new trees, uh, at the sports complex, Chautauqua, Big Wilson, College, Egbert and Kelly Parks. Uh, those trees are all used through the Trees Please Grant and the Tree City USA plant are grants that we use. So those are all funded through that. Um, we water those weekly, so each tree gets roughly three to five gallons of water, uh, once a week for, uh, we typically try to go late summer, early fall for our watering. Uh, seems to work out a little bit better for us so that we're not using, you know, water all year and time and effort to go, you know, all year having to do that. So we try to utilize the nicer weather in the fall. Uh, pool operations, like I said, we talked about that a little bit last month. Uh, but we did close up the pool for the season. Winterizing is all done. We got a couple more things as far as, uh, putting away some of the stuff, but for the most part, that's all done. Uh, Echo, who is our, uh, pool supplier and Rent a Systems, is company out of Indianapolis that did our liner for the pool. We had an issue two years ago with the liner bubbling on us. Didn't happen this year. We haven't come out. The first opportunity we could get them to come out was actually September this year, so. They came out, uh, inspected everything for us, uh, determined that whatever the issue was, isn't something that is probably going to be that big of a deal in the future as far as coming back again. It might come up. They're thinking it was pressure from underneath with the old system that's cracked and kind of deteriorated underneath that pool liner. Uh, the one thing they did tell us was we could take off some silicone sealants or some sealant we had on there. Come back with like a hundred percent silicone sealant, uh, make sure that that, uh, transition area was sealed as best as we could get it, but really there was, it was inconclusive. It was kind of disheartening a little bit is, I mean, it'd be nice to pinpoint it with one thing for sure and say, hey, this is it, this is what's causing the issue. But like I said, they didn't come back this year, so. You know, it's one of those things, we had it when the old pool was there, we had a bubble come up. Release the, uh, air out of it and it never came back again. So, uh, just kind of one of those weird things with the PVC liner that it could pop up, so. Uh, then pool projects and improvements in the park. We did the Culver project, uh, that was completed right out here by Justin Minor that was finished. It's last month. We got a little bit to clean up from there, just kind of tidying up the last little bit, but that's done. Uh, we haven't had real significant rain to see as far as water coming down there, how that'll react, but we're kind of excited that we'll get some of that water out of the park a little bit quicker than we would have in the past. Uh, Sweet Life Painting out of Council Bluffs completed the Leacham Park painting project for us. Uh, they are a new vendor for us that, uh, came in with a low bid this year. Uh, we were really impressed with what they did. They were very, very good job of communicating. They were on time. They were under budget as far as, you know, the lowest bid. They, uh, they professional communicated with us every day as far as, hey, this is what we're doing, you know? Um, if we needed bathrooms closed or if we could open them up. Uh, we generally were impressed with them and definitely would use it to begin in the pat, in the, in the future. Um, installed new window covers at Chautauqua. These are on the bathrooms up there. Uh, we've had plexiglass in the years past. This is a wire mesh we put on. We're kind of, we put it on a couple of windows or half the windows up there just to see how it goes. We'll see how it works and if it works in that park, we'll probably put in some of the other bathrooms just to keep sunlight in. Keep animals out, that sort of thing. It's kind of nice. It's better than the plexiglass. Plexiglass for whatever reason just didn't really work the way we wanted it to. Um, putting glass in there is just not really an option, a feasible option, so. Then moving on to community events throughout the summer. Uh, citywide cleanup, uh, junction days cleanup and, uh, tear down. And then the, uh, our, one of our bigger projects this summer was the, uh, Frisbee Golf, uh, goals out at the sports complex. So they've been powder coated, powder coated for us about 12 years ago. Uh, they were due for another, uh, a little bit of upkeep on those. Uh, that was a little job between us, the cemetery, we got them all out, got them out to Red Oak Fabrication. Got them sand blasted, powder coated, and then they repaired them for us as they were, as they were out there. So it was good to, uh, get those done, redone. They're bright red now. They're, they stick out pretty well, so they were orange or black before and we had a few, uh, comments saying that the black ones kind of faded into the background a little bit, so we went with the brighter colors, so. And that's it. If there's any questions, gladly answer them.
Yes, Adam, I've, I've got, I've got one, uh, one thing I'd like to just put out there. I, you're probably way ahead of me on this, but, you know, in the future, we're going to need the kiosks at the trailheads. And then of course our downtown, uh, pavilion is going to need to be redone as well. You know, perhaps when we do one of those bigger projects like that at the, uh, Legion Park, we can get those done at the same time and maybe save a buck or two. If, you know, if we can't find volunteers for the other stuff.
Yep, correct. Yeah, I have definitely. Well, take that into consideration and when we, those come up, I believe those, I believe you did though, the one on the square a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I did the, I did the main trailhead too, but you know, I'm, I'm not going to live forever, so.
Uh, I will definitely put that on my list of, uh, things when it comes up to be done again, so.
Yeah, and you know, and I just, and something that, it really bothers me that we're having so many issues with that pool after we spent two and a half million dollars to upgrade it. I just, I wonder if there's something we're missing or, or what. I just, that really bothers me.
Yeah, and so the, the part that I'm talking about is the transition piece.
I, I'm aware, I'm aware what, how we, we joined the old vessel to the new and I was never in favor of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, thanks, Adam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question with regard to these three pieces of playground equipment from Outlaw Recreation for Kelly Park.
Yes. So those are being, uh, merry-go-round that we took out. Uh, so we ordered those and I got them ordered last week, I believe, so those are just going to replace what the big merry-go-round was. These are kind of like the, if you see them, they're kind of smaller. They're like sitting spins is what they call them. So there's three different ones that we got. Uh, I don't know how else to explain them, but you know, it's just, I mean, they're for wider range of kids. It's a little less of a liability as far as a giant merry-go-round. That's merry-go-round's a kind of not best favorite with insurance companies as far as what they are, but these, um, these should hopefully come in and we'll probably get them in next spring unless the weather stays nice, we can get them in this, in this fall, yeah, so.
One more, Adam.
Yep.
Fountain maintenance, received installed new filter arrays. What's the additional part?
So the additional part is the bottom like drain plug. So that, so I've had it happen to me twice now. This was the second time. The first time, so what happens is pressure is built up and it blows that plug out. First time was able to put it back in. It was a bit, no big deal. Second time it blew out, it stripped the, uh, the, uh, the, basically the nut out of it as far as being able to put the cap back in. So that Echo come down, they can give me a part. It's hard to get parts, so. I've been here, I think, going on 16 years. So it's the original fountain light filter, so. Probably get another couple of years over that, so we're probably looking at close to 20 years. So getting parts on that's a little harder. The company's changed hands a couple of different times. So he can give me the part and I can get it fixed again, but the biggest thing is it's starting to get brittle, so as I replace things and open that things back up, things are starting to break and stuff like that. So I've had them come down. He's going to give me a price on what it would cost to, uh, put in a new filter and pump. So pump we actually have out there is one that we used, uh, at the baby pool when we closed the, uh, baby pool. We sold that out of there, put it in there, and so we're both kind of on borrowed time with both of those, but.
Are we going to start getting, getting, that's kind of main feature. We're going to start getting, uh, lost in place, like what to do to?
Yes, yeah, so he, so he's giving me all those prices to replace both those pieces so that we can get back up and running and then get going from there and be a little more consistent.
Now, you, you feel like that's the reason why that doesn't maintain water level the whole summer, is there a leak somewhere else?
Uh, I think there's a leak somewhere else. I don't know as far, I believe my best guess is there's a leak somewhere in between where the, uh, actual drain is and the, the pump house, so.
So, so you, you know, there's visible cracks in that vessel there at the, at the fountain. And, you know, I mean, i- if there's a visible crack, water's flowing through there constantly. It may not be a bunch, but it's enough to affect the level. I, I feel like if we put, uh, and I know we've done it in the past, but I think if we do it again, put some kind of a, uh, you know, elastomer, a polyelastomeric, elastomeric kind of thing in there, I think we'll be better off perhaps.
Yeah, yep, for sure. And that, that's, you know, I can look into as far as when we repaint it too, with, you know, versus a, you know, a PVC liner versus a more rubberized paint, uh, going back in there, so. It'll be, it's a couple of different things, like once we get an idea as far as the filter and the pump itself of what that will cost, it'll give us a better idea of what we can go to next as far as where the.
You know, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with, with Mr. Heatbrink on this. I really feel like, you know, being that's our fountain square, I really feel like that fountain needs to be operational, you know?
For sure.
Most, more, more than not.
Yes, for sure. I agree.
One last question.
Yep, no problem.
With regard to the comment about fundraising for the playground.
Yes.
On Legion Park, do you have any rough ballpark of how much you're looking at since we have Community Heart and Soul here?
Uh, maybe Lisa can talk to this a little bit more as far as, I don't, I think we've, we've been, we've heard a couple of different numbers, but nothing that is like, I would say, I would feel comfortable saying in public at this point, I mean, it's, you know, it's.
It's not cheap.
It's not, it's not cheap and, you know, it's going to go to a different style or different system as far as the fall system and that sort of thing versus the sand versus cement and the, uh, rubberized padding, so.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
So the owl is not working. I don't know why. It's only picking up whatever's being shown from my laptop. So I'm going to turn it to, oh, we'll keep it this way for Heart and Soul, but I'm just letting people in the audience know. They're not getting the usual, whoever is talking gets closer.
Okay. Thank you. Technology.
Been a bad word all day.
All right, B is Community Heart and Soul Action Plan Presentation. Thank you for being here, all of you. Um, first up, um, good evening, I'm Maggie McQuown. Maybe help me. Um, I'm a native Red Oaker who's rumoring back after being absent for 40 years. I'd like to share a bit of insight on the genesis of the Red Oak, um, how Red Oak became involved with Community Heart and Soul and became a participant, and I'm so grateful that we have. In 2018, Beau Bowie and I were working on the Red Oak rebranding project as part of the Red Oak Chambers Marketing and Tourism Committee. After a local food meeting at Golden Hills RCD, Michelle, Juankey, Frank's and I started talking about Red Oak and the rebranding project. I voiced a desire and uncertainty of how to make the rebranding project include input from the full cross-section of Red Oak's residents. How could this be a grassroots project where everybody felt their opinion counted and would build community unity? Um, I had learned through my marketing career that grassroots projects have a much greater chance of success because everyone has, feels like they've had a seat at the table, a sense of ownership and pride in the outcome. Somehow the conversation led to a long discussion about Community Heart and Soul. Because coincidentally, both Michelle and I have become aware of it recently. What was most important to us about how Community Heart and Souls process, um, what the key difference was, it was present that driven and it was focused on planning for the future, but it was a grassroots approach. The process relies on extensive outreach, storytelling, story gathering, individuals voting by, often by speaking of, I can't tell you how many millions of speaking of students on what is important to them and building a plan around what matters most to the broader community. Better yet, Michelle indicated her intention of becoming a Community Heart and Soul certified coach. Beau and I brought Michelle to Red Oak to a Chamber Marketing and Tourism Committee meeting to present Community Heart and Soul and discuss using it for the rebranding project. But the timing just wasn't right. We were a few years too early. So jump forward to 2021. Michelle was now a seasoned Community Heart and Soul coach and was ready to again bring it to Red Oak, this time through her relationship with Cynthia Bankston. They presented Community Heart Soul to the council here on January of 2022 and in February, the council approved a resolution of support for Red Oak to participate in Community Heart and Soul. Um, here we are, three years, nine months later. We're finally ready to present the findings and action plan. During the extensive process, the core team of 11 intrepid volunteers have stirred, has steered the project, kept it on course, moved it steadily forward. Many of those core team members are here. A special kudos to Samantha Williams, the Red Oak Community Heart and Soul Project Coordinator. She did much of the heavy lifting and devoted an unfathomable number of hours to compiling, analyzing and summarizing data. Thank you, Samantha. And thank you to Michelle for her insightful guidance and encouragement every step of the way. Finally, I would like to recognize and thank the thousands of community members who have contributed big and small to the project. The team heard voices connected with, often for the first time, countless new faces who are members of our wonderful community. For that reason alone, many of us are no longer strangers. We are neighbors and friends. Thank you to the many volunteers, the valuable time they took away from their work, families and friends. This process was not possible without all of our wonderful volunteers. Now I'd like Michelle Frank's to share her perspective of Red Oak Community Heart and Soul as our faithful cheerleader and coach. Michelle.
I'm not nearly as prepared, uh, as Maggie, but, um, the reason I became a coach for Community Heart and Soul, which first of all is a national organization and with the city council's adoption of the plan that's being presented to, to night, you're joining 18 other communities in Iowa and hundreds of other communities across the United States. And so you're part of a community that is cheering on the progress of Red Oak. Uh, I've been in contact with, uh, the National Office, which is based in Vermont, and they are asking for regular updates and the reason why is because, and this was actually a conversation with Mayor Silvius as well. We were looking for a grassroots process that would help communities learn how to civically engage, how to make decisions for their own community. Uh, and we came across this and of course I was, you know, sharing this fantastic thing, but the whole reason I became a coach in the first place is because of Red Oak. Um, I've lived in Southwest Iowa for 20 years and my history is intertwined with this community, even though I'm not a resident. But I knew that Red Oak has good bones. It has caring people and so much potential. And I knew if we could just unite the power of this community, um, that good things could happen. So Community Heart and Soul is a national organization and, uh, it's really guided by three primary goals. The first is to focus on what matters most to the community. Uh, as a coach, I helped the core team go through a process to make sure that we include everyone as much as possible. So it's not always the same ten people who come to all the planning meetings and all the regular means. This was a very intentional approach to get voices, um, to the table um, who maybe hadn't been engaged in the past. And so the document that you're receiving tonight, uh, from the Red Oak Community Heart and Soul really represents the voices broadly of your constituents, of your community, of your neighbors and what they are saying they'd like to see in Red Oak and what their hopes and dreams are for the community as well. Um, the last thing is focusing on.
Can you hear me?
Brian, we can't, uh, I think we lost the, the feed.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I got you. I can't see you, but I, I can't see you, but I, but I hear you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I'm wondering if they had like another power outage or, I don't know, a blip on the, on the internet there. I, I texted Lisa and Suzie.
Karen, shh, she can hear you.
No.
Yeah, I see you now. Hi, Michelle. But you're muted. You're muted.
He has a process.
Now I hear you.
Um, we created spaces for dialogue, for short story sharing, for people to get to know each other in a more meaningful way that I think is going to serve Red Oak far into the future. So thank you. It's been a tremendous privilege, uh, to work with the core team and the community and I'm so excited to see what comes next. With that, I would like to introduce my partner in crime, Cynthia Banks.
I'll just add some comments. This action plan marks the end of phase three for Community Heart and Soul's four-phase process. This is the time to reveal the results of our two-year journey to listen and learn from the individuals in our community, share the resulting plan with the entire community and celebrate this great milestone. Community Heart and Soul is hosting a community-wide Growing Ideas into Action Celebration on Wednesday, November 19th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Wilson Performing Arts Center. The public is invited. This is where we will share the community action plan with the community at large. Uh, as we enter phase four, we bring everyone together to turn our, those items that have been prioritized into a real project. So we together create a vital thriving and unified bone town. Uh, Samantha is our project coordinator and she can answer any questions you might have.
Hello, my name is Samantha Williams. I'm the project coordinator for Red Oak Community Heart and Soul. I've been with the group for a little over two years now. Um, I am here to answer any questions or comments that you might have. Um, and again, thank you for your time today.
Well, I don't think anybody else is going to say, but I want to say thank you to Michelle, for spending this time and to the entire committee for all the time you've put into this. It's huge. It's been a significant undertaking and you have all done it very, very well. So thank you, guys.
You know, I've got, I've got a comment as well, you know, I, uh, you know, I can't thank all of you enough and, you know, I remember when this whole project was just kind of like a whisper in the background. And, and I really feel like the information that you all put together and have quantified is going to be extremely important going forward to, you know, to kind of, you know, lead us on the right path. So I can't thank you enough. I, I really feel like it's invaluable what you all have done, so once again, thank you.
I also find it very interesting the priority targets for each of the six quarters. Some of them are all of the ones I, and some we have, yeah, it's exciting. Good to know. Anybody else have anything to add?
Sort of one of those meetings with all the little sticky notes. That's the fun. That's absolutely, it was very, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
This should all be in here too. We're great, she. There's almost, is, is there one person missing or are you all here? Janice, that's it. That's it. I was like, I counted 11, but I counted you.
That's right, that's right. I get it. All right. All right, so number nine is our consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. It's also the receipts of the minutes for the Park and Tree Board from ten, nine, twenty-five, Planning and Zoning Board from ten, twenty, twenty-five, the Library Board from ten, thirteen, twenty-five, the Low-Rent Housing Board from ten, twenty-five, twenty-five, and the Airport Commission from ten, ten, twenty-five. It was also really nice to read all of those minutes and just catch up. And then also the November third, twenty twenty-five claims. And we also received some additional claims.
Saying you can't see them. It's been a bad technology bill all day. We were like totally dysfunctional at work. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know what to say. You can either approve them, and I can email them all, the new ones.
Well, we can approve the ones that we had in front of us, correct?
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable just through the ones that, without the additional, I'm really sorry, but it's kind of hard to prove what you don't know.
Yep, I'm willing to approve the ones we have in front of us.
Okay, but that's seven, seventy thousand, nine hundred, ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. Are you making a motion, Brian?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Brian, first?
I'll second.
Janice, Lester, I'm sorry, Bills and Lester. Got it? Any other discussion? So we're approving the claims that were presented in the packet. We'll call them. Lester, yes. Be free.
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
All right, number ten, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-two. This is the approval of the Heart and Soul Community Action Plan.
I move to approve.
Right off?
I'll second that.
That was completely unison. Brian, Bills, all right. So, right off and Bills, roll call. Be free?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Number eleven, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-three. Thank you. This is to set the public hearing to accept bids for the two lots to sell. This is sub lot two of Lot Ten in Block Eight in western addition to the city of Red Oak, Montgomery County, Iowa. According to the recorded plat, said addition, commonly known as three oh three West Second Street, and then Lot Ten in Block Fifty-five in the city of Red Oak, Montgomery County, Iowa. According to the recorded plat, therefore, commonly known as one oh seven East Rhymes. It's just to set the public hearing.
These are the two that we did not get any bids on in our first round, that we sold a lot of properties. And we think that, like, we had a call about one, and Brad Baker's been talking to the neighbor of the other one. So we were kind of more aggressive on trying to get people to put in bids. We would like to get rid of them before snow flies.
Unless we'll be, so bids will be due no later than eleven AM on Monday, December first. It must be submitted on the city-provided bid form. Each bidder must indicate their intended use of the property and a proposed timeline. The city council will consider both the bid amount and the proposed use in its selection of the minimum bids to have some relativity to the assessed value and not just one dollar bid. It is not expected that each bid must equal the assessed value, but the value will be taken into consideration when accepting a bid. And then following the receipt and review of all bids, the city council will hold a final public hearing to consider the proposed sales and to allow for public comment before formally approving the sale of any lots. The city reserves the right to reject any and all bids. And the city administrators hereby authorized and directed to advertise the properties listed above for sale and to initiate the sealed bid process. Properties will be sold as is, whereas with no abstract provided by the city and subject to applicable zoning regulations.
My motion stands.
I'll second.
Right off? And Lester? Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Be free?
Yes.
Number twelve is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-four. This is the acceptance and commitment to the Rural Innovation Housing two point O grant. This is the fifty thousand dollar grant. We also provided twenty-five percent match. And do you want to share anything else, Lisa?
No, just congratulations. I think, as we always know, people have opinions about everything. After it was posted that we received the grant, people started a few negative comments. So congratulations on your fifty thousand, but we don't like the way you're spending it. So I tried to give Jim Hoskinson, who had posted the post, more information to make sure that people understood that this is, we're not just taking something to put on a shelf, but as we approach the lake and monies, you know, that will be allocated for the community, we have our hundred thousand dollars that's intended from TIF dollars to be spent on low to moderate income. Like, how do we decide where to best use that money? And so obviously, one of our biggest problems is the floodplain and the limitation that floodplain regulations put on the amount of money that people can spend on that. So I think that most people don't understand if you have a house that's worth fifty thousand dollars, even if someone won the lottery, and, well, if they won the lottery, they probably could, but you either have to bring it into floodplain compliance, like jack up the house, do everything from a certain level below, you know, to use flood-resistant materials, which can tend to be more expensive. So we're basically trying to say, like, what does a block look like? The students from ISU would be here all next summer, two students working with their professors before that to create a database. We had already approved, working with J E O to do some improvements and kind of put that on hold until the grant was, you know, either received or not received. So that'll help us with some of that funding, which will help update the plan from J E O, be able to really talk more about whether it makes sense from a financial perspective to do the pump that would go from the creek to the river, different things like that. And so it is relevant whether people understand, you know, the big picture. But obviously, those of you that are more deeply involved in those conversations, I think it will be a good use of dollars. And instead of us spending seventy-five to do the same thing, we'll be spending twenty-five. Congratulations. This is just approving it. Technically, the resolution that you submitted with the grant would have approved it, but I always think it's good to kind of reaffirm after we got it that we're going to allocate the funds.
Well, and this must be completed in the next eighteen months, right, by June of twenty twenty-seven? The data will go into our G S, G I S mapping system, so you'll be able to see how these houses are rated, basically by these students' rating system. So that will help with planning for either blocks or areas of town that can be redeveloped, or we can provide funding from possibly that hundred thousand or other funding sources, maybe some of the other things that we have going to help make floodproofing as a possibility, or even hoping to weatherize the outsides a little better, so.
Can I put my two cents worth in?
What's that?
I want to put two cents in.
Okay.
So, you know, I read some of those comments on Facebook as well. I never respond, but I read them. And, you know, I think that people have a misunderstanding of how funding and grants and things work. I mean, we have to do the studies. We have to spend our own money to do the studies, to show people that we are invested, and we are truly interested in making these growth changes happen. So, that said, that's how we get these grants. And these grants have started coming to us just recently because of all these monies that we've spent on studies in the past. So, it's not, it's not for nothing, and it all works out in the long run. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
It's the only way you can get a bid. And so before you can, you can't do anything until you have a bid. So it is definitely a critical, important part. And also, this builds upon our rural housing readiness assessment, as well as our downtown assessment. So really, we're going to be adding value to the downtown in the long run. So this is a really good thing. And also, hopefully, the students are a part of the College of Design, so some of them may have some architecture or landscape architecture background, or some conservation things, and there may be some other ways of rerouting water from the creek into reservation areas. I would love to see the Red Oak Creek be an amenity that is a beautification area, but is also an amenity that that community's citizens can value.
One of the seminars I attended at the Iowa League of Cities Conference was dealt with things like that, and they, they had, you know, examples of those types of projects, you know, not free, but, you know, for sure, we could certainly do things like that. But we have ownership issues with the Red Oak Creek, so.
And that's why the Land and Stewardship Iowa Stewardship Organization, and one of the people at the Mayor's Design Council was from there, who does this type of landscape. What do you call it, Michelle? It's conservation. It's basically taking a way of rerouting the water that can overflow and protecting the areas all around it by having grassy areas, ravines, mediation, yeah. And so you may not have to do the pump. There's a possibility that you could get by without the pump, but I'm anticipating the pump will probably still be somewhat necessary, but. But anyway, if there's a way of looking at other options, that's great. All right, so Resolution to approve the acceptance of the commitment. I have a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve it.
Lester? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Be free? Any other further discussion? Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Be free?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
And thanks for providing the application again. They said that it's helpful, because it helps showcase what it is, the idea, project idea is, and it really does fill out the entire budget, so it's really good. You did a nice job, and I appreciate all your hard work on it, especially because I know how else you had so many other things going on at the same time. Number thirteen, this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-five. This is to hire P F M Financial Advisors LLC for the water and the sewer rate study.
So, we have approved a firm before that just wasn't able to get to us. And so in order to facilitate this, as we're continuing to process the wastewater treatment facility improvements and our water study, I'm recommending that we switch to P F M Financial Advisors. We are saving a thousand dollars compared to the last contract that we had, and it was more before that. So I would recommend us switching to have the study completed by P F M Financials.
And do you know when this will be done, then?
I think they'll start working on it right away.
I move to approve. Lester?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Be free?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
It was awfully short roll call.
Where's Sharon tonight? Where's Sharon?
He is not available this evening.
I see. I hope she's okay.
She'll be fine.
Great.
All right, so Resolution, number fourteen, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-six. This is the appointment of Low-Rent Housing Board Member, and this is to appoint our one and only applicant, which was Elaine Holland, to replace Carolyn Marsden with a board position to expire January of twenty twenty-six. So that's just for a couple months, and then the new mayor will get to the opportunity to appoint new people.
Well, you know Elaine, she was very thoughtful.
Absolutely.
She's, she's bold, force, and everything, so.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Lester?
Second.
And right off? Any discussion? Roll call. Lester? Yes. Be free?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Number fifteen is the Animal Control and Welfare Committee Update. I think Lisa supplied you with the minutes from that meeting, but I don't think any of you were able to get access to them.
No, they can get that, it's just the bills. You can get some minutes, right?
Is it just the bills? Basically, we had a great first meeting. We did have some challenges with people realizing the city hall's not the county courthouse. But we did have everyone show up.
Does happen.
We started a little later than we had tend, but six fifty, we called the meeting to order. Everyone was present. We have an incredible committee. We approved the agenda. We entered, did introductions of all the members. Again, very, very intelligent, committed and passionate group of people with extremely diverse skills. Really exciting to see this group. And then we reviewed just the purpose of the committee, which was based on the resolution that we approved. And I don't have my minutes in front of me to tell me, to tell you what all of this. Basically, it's to review chapter fifty-five and fifty-six of our ordinances, compare those to some other cities' ordinances that have been written with a little bit more detail. So it defines what adequate shelter, it defines what adequate care is, it defines what is a nuisance or dangerous animal in much more detail, with the hope that it can reduce the number of negative outcomes, I guess, but also be a very solid educational tool for the community to teach the community more. Also, look at the possibility of adding a spay-neuter or trap-neuter and return program to that. Also, look at potential locations for housing, impounding animals, and transitioning to an animal rescue or adoption center in the short term, middle term, and long term. They want to review our enforcement processes and licensing fees, and then make recommendations to the council with regard to policy updates and changes, and then ways to implement this. And basically, what, we did not go through all of the codes that night, but we left knowing that we were all going to go take a stab at adding to them, looking at them, looking at other communities, and coming back to our next meeting with recommendations. The other thing they felt was really important was to do a survey to the community, and they want to do that through the utility bill. We would need approval, I suppose, to do an envelope, prepaid envelope, for people to return that. I figured we would get the questions from the group. They want no more than eight to ten questions. So, front and back, possibly, and then to make it simple that people would return it. And then also, we could program it into a SharePoint form so that anyone who wants to take it online can through Facebook or through our website link. So that is something that's in the process. Those will be the two things of our next meeting discussion. We also approved a slate of officers, which includes Rome Azuna as the chair, Kylie, Kaylee Maines as the vice chair, and Secretary is Colleen Ross. And then we did discuss possibly breaking this task down into smaller bits by having some subcommittees. We're going to talk about that more in the future. And then they would like to meet the Animal Nuisance Control Officer at some point, just to understand what the role is. But we'll do that when the time is right. And then as far as the timeline of accomplishing this, I think we approved the minutes or approved the resolution with the December thirty-first of twenty-five. They can't get all this done that fast, so I have a feeling they're going to be asking you for an extension for their other things, but I think they're going to plan to get the codes to you, because I think that was the whole idea, was to get the code recommendations before you would re-clotify. And then as far as frequency, they plan to meet every week until we can get as much done as possible. And so the next meeting will be this Friday, the seventh, at six thirty at City Hall. Then the next one will be Wednesday, the twelfth, and then Wednesday, the nineteenth, all at six thirty at City Hall. So they did talk about doing a year, I mean, they talked about fundraising, ways to raise money. This is a committed group of people who are in it for the long term, and I think that they just have a great, their expertise is amazing. Rome is a certified licensed DNR wildlife nuisance rescuer, and Kaylee is a zoologist who's getting her masters from U N L in basically reproductive things of animals. That's very, her talents are very good. Colleen Dixie Strange, Ashley York. Who am I missing?
Oh, Mayor, I guess, I guess my question.
More than Worthington, and then, of course, Joe was there as well. So, what was that?
Mayor, is there some way we could get the county to join in and get involved in this as well? I think that, I think that would be beneficial, as, you know, some of the, I feel like that'd be a good idea.
As far as the facility goes, they think it's necessary. That's why they want to do a year roundup. As far as the facility goes, they think it's necessary. That's why they wanna do a year roundup fundraiser. Um, but.
You know, the county has got some, the county's got some locations that are probably underutilized at this point that might be well suited for those kind of things.
Yeah, didn't think about that. So anyway, that was, that was the update there. So you're more than welcome to join anytime, but. Um, questions, once we have the questions, we'll get those to Lisa to review. Um, and then to save her the time, I can put it in our SharePoint if we need to or. Whatever, but I guess the question would be is if we provide an envelope, that would be a discussion point, I guess. They wanted to go out in the December bill. Which would be, when does that mail?
It's just a lot of envelopes. I think that people can stick it in their own envelope.
Yeah.
Put it in the Dropbox.
Yeah, it's really expensive.
Well, you could do the envelope without a stamp, but.
Yeah.
Just saying. Go to, you know, this website address.
We're gonna do an insert. Can we do the insert and just have them bring it in to City Hall?
Or I like the idea of having a web web presence with it. It seems like people.
Free Brian, but there are a lot of people in our community that care about animals that don't.
I.
They can go to the library.
Well, they're not gonna know.
Um, Lisa, how much does it cost to put a, how much does it cost to put the envelope in the bill?
Well, I don't think you should put the envelope, but you could do a paper survey that gets.
Okay, well, whatever. How, what's what's the cost?
Think that when we bid out the utility billing and added, it was like. I don't know, three or four hundred dollars.
You know what? I I'm I'm all for that. I think it's a good idea. If we can get some input, let's do it. I think it's a great idea.
You can just have on the bottom, like, here's the link to go to. And then drop it off at City Hall.
Yeah.
And mail it back yourself to this address.
Yeah, we definitely need to do something about.
Twenty-five hundred envelopes. They can drop it. We can say like, drop it at the library, City Hall.
Be a lot easier if they have an online presence.
Well, it would be bold. It would be bold.
We'll have one vote.
But some people won't do the.
I do. I feel like that's the way we should push.
And then we'll enter those that are, we'll sort, all goes into that same system so it can print out the right.
Sounds like a good idea.
I know we wanted to get a community-wide input on the value of animals, so.
We just have to be careful that I I. And just caution the group that remember, there's a lot of money that goes along with certain things. So to say. This, you know, simple questions like, do you want us to have a shelter? Like. You know, they have to be conscientious about how you ask, because if you ask and everybody says yes. You have to be careful what you ask.
I think it's gonna be more questions like.
Well, every everybody, I mean, everybody that. Everybody should understand, if you want something, it doesn't come free.
I don't know about that.
They know better than to ask for money.
What did you just say they want to do? I didn't hear anything, Brian.
I think they would probably ask if they feel that the city should have a a way of.
But that's even worse, because then why would you say no? The consequences of like, you know what I mean?
Well.
So you have to be careful.
Questions coming. How many we haven't talked about?
Right.
Well, it's like, it's like our city cleanup. If we wanna clean up the junk, it's not free. If we wanna clean up the stray animals, that's not gonna be free either.
I think though, if you're talking about anything that's like a shelter. It has to be countywide.
I I would agree. That's why I mentioned the.
Because right now, we get calls from somebody that's like, I just picked up a dog in Elliot, and we're like, sorry, we don't take Elliot dogs. And randomly, three days later, the dog made its way to Red Oak Island.
Well, I understand.
The exact same dog that we got a picture of shows up here, and now it's dumped in our town and we have to take it. So if you have a countywide effort. Then, so to me, if it's. Like, I think it's things that we can do outside of a shelter, but nobody, nobody has a humane society of a city. They have county humane societies. Like, if you just think about any other places that you've been, like, nobody says this is the city of Red Oak Humane Society. It's always a county. Or obviously, if you were like a council bluffs, Omahont.
Well, I I hear, I hear that, but I have been in communities where they have city shelters, so.
That's not a humane society.
I I I completely understand what you're saying. However, comma, wait, it is an issue that we can't just ignore forever.
No, we can't. That's been the problem.
But remember, we also have a lot of things that because we are so much different in size from the county. Other communities that we end up taking the lead on things. People talk about our taxes. And there are oftentimes things that we are funding countywide because.
And.
There's such discrepancy between a five thousand five hundred person community and all the other communities in the county, so.
And that's, and that's exactly why I mentioned that we should get the county involved in this.
Right.
Their whole idea is to get facts and figures that they can present to the county, so. They plan to go speak to the county, so. But it helps to have figures. Alrighty, um, let's see, there's other items on here. Are you gonna talk about these as a part of, yes? Right, number sixteen is uh reports and comments, city administrator.
So we are working on the wastewater study. Clint. Um, met with staff from Snyder. They were able to do some. Review of different things and actually were able to cut, I think, almost what they thought was about a million dollars. They, I was not at the meeting. It was when I was out of town last week at my conference, but. They felt positive about it, just looking at things that, you know, are not. Privilets, but they could live without or, and I even know if it was just necessarily cutting things, but making adjustments that would save money. So they're progressing with that. Uh, the water system study, you'll recall, that's being done by JDO. Uh, they did send the staff a preliminary. Uh, study results to look at, and Clint and I will be reviewing those, and then I think probably in December is when it'll come before the council, so you'll get that, so we're continuing that. The floodplain study, of course, there was a little bit of work done over the last six weeks since you approved that contract, but we wanted to kind of hold off. Since there was the opportunity to use that grant funding for it, and so we'll kind of start blazing the trail even more now. But you'll recall that was taking that previous study and really looking at things that need to be updated if we're gonna proceed with anything uh with regard to. Changes to the floodplain. I was at my conference last week, um, five thousand city administrators and managers from all over the world, so it's a super great place to. To really just network, connect, and then of course. Um, really kind of looking at what are. What are the hot topics in terms of city management? AI, which I didn't put a lot of stuff in here in, but AI was a big component of just talking about. How do we effectively use AI and make ourselves? In a, in a position to work smarter. Um, obviously that, um, I think one person that made a presentation talked about like the importance though that humans have to be in the loop. So that we can't just use AI, you know, as a tool and not be checking it. Um, but there's definitely, like, I use it right now, but we don't, you know, have that. Um, deployed throughout the whole staff, so we'll start talking about as a staff, like, how we can use that, because it really is. Helpful in terms of just helping you, you know, in documentation and various things like that. So we had that. Um, a lot of focus on people issues, you know, when we talk about like. The negativity that we sometimes experience in city government. Um, our first keynote speaker was about loving your enemies. And really just talking about how instead of us having just discord where people just disagree. Um, that somehow we've. Uh, taken the people that we disagree with and almost dehumanizing them. And forgetting that they are people with different opinions, and so how do we kind of bring back? Um, the ability for us as a country, as a community, to. Simply disagree and be able to have healthy conversations and not villainize people that you don't agree with. Or really just treat them like they don't even exist and not care about them. So that was the topic by Arthur Brooks called Love Your Enemies. Um. There was just another person about, you know, being bold, um, while still caring about people and just challenging. You know, what happens like, and I've said this for all of my thirty years, I received my thirty-year service award, so I got to walk across the stage in front of everybody. Uh, with one of my best friends, Beth, that has helped us from Asbury. We both got our thirty-year awards. Um, so that was fun, just recognizing that that's a long, long time of doing this work and. Even though it isn't always a popular job, like, it's super rewarding and and I still appreciate doing that, but. Amy talked a lot, uh, the second presenter was just about like. How we present ourselves, the things that we do. Um. The last keynote speaker was also about loving where you live. And that we as city managers. Um, and city administrators really have to truly care about where we live and allow other people to do that. So they just had like super creative ways. Um, and it goes a lot, along a lot with the things that are in the heart and soul plan, but sometimes we sit as leaders. And don't really empower other people to be able to do things. Um, and maybe sometimes they seem like they're crazy ideas, but to let people go with them and try to do different things, who care? They had. Um, just some random trees that were in a community that had hurricanes and tornadoes and people started painting tree trunks. You know, like, just in the middle of nowhere, we took beauty. They had a place in Seattle. They showed, um, since it gets so rainy there, that there was a substance that only shows up when it gets wet. And that they had taken that paint and like, it was like smile even though it's a rainy day. And the only time that those things appeared on the sidewalk. Were when it was raining in Seattle. So just like super cool ideas um to allow people to take pride and to come up with creative ideas. Um, you know, we talked a lot about recruitment and retaining good people. Um, there was a speaker that was from a place in in Texas. She was a city manager, one of the breakout sessions. Um, and a lot of times we are faced with those difficult conversations and three things that I took um. Out of her conversation with us was first of all. Um, that when we make decisions about things, it's about positions and decisions and it's not about people. And oftentimes, again, we personalize those decisions so much. Um, that maybe it's harder to make those decisions, but we as a government have to make the decisions that's best. For the organization and not try to personalize it too much. Um, and then, and then the second thing that she said was that um we get what we tolerate. And how do you rise above? You know, just being being proud of a community and there is always gonna be noise. And so how do we drown that out? So I don't have this one on the agenda, but I um, I'll send this to the floor view over there. Um, but I am going to be meeting with Aaron at KCSI. I sent him this. Um, but I wanna start a podcast, that's city. Um, and that it's not gonna be city government focused, but you can take this home. Um, but I want, I I try to think of like, how are we gonna be louder than the negativity that some ti- times surround us? And when we look at. You know, the school invited people to talk about it. Um, and so as I kind of worked on what it would be called, I would like it to be a weekly podcast. Um, I'm hoping that KCSI. Can help us with being the host, uh, kind of co-host with us so that we can do it in their studios. Um, you know, we can put it on all different kinds of platforms, obviously pushing on our local social media, but I'd like to call it Rise Up Red Oak, where good news gets louder. And I think the whole point is, we need to be louder than all the negativity, because we can't change it. But we can certainly be louder than it and just try to drown that stuff out. Um, and so I put some stuff on here about the different ideas. Like, some of the episodes that I sort of tried to put together would be like a cup of community stories from the community shop, coffee shop. Maybe somebody like Val and Norm, you know, from from Val's can come down and like be our hope, be our guest. So it'd be like that twenty to twenty-five minutes. Um, certainly there'll be city things to. Um, to kind of celebrate, but if the volleyball kids were going like they are this week, you know, they could be invited if cross-country. And it can kind of be like a chunk in the middle, and then even it can just be little things that you would celebrate before the end of it, like, just so I kind of talked about like. You know, it might be ten to fifteen minutes of of the main guest. Uh, with say like myself and Aaron being the hosts that would be there every time. You know, we can tape it when it works best for Aaron and then decide what, you know, most podcasts will drop their newest weekly thing, like on the same day, same time. Um.
You know, I think this is. I'm sorry, Lisa. I think this is great, and you know, we talked a while back uh about having a quarterly newsletter included with the. The utility bills, and I I think that's a great idea as well for people that really don't do the podcast thing, but I think both are a great idea.
Right. Um, so yeah, uh Hannah and I are working on that kind of on Canva, the the newsletter thing, and again, you could do that both with paper and. The same thing is people can sign up and you can drop it electronically. Um, but really, again, my podcast idea is focusing on progress, collaboration, community pride, highlighting solutions, good outcomes. Being friendly and conversational in each of the episodes, and there's something good we can talk about every week. And let's just try to be louder.
Think it's exciting.
Yeah.
It's just really exciting to do the positive, and we've always all kind of said that we need.
Need people to speak up.
And and speak up and show what we have and what good is around, so.
And it's hard, because I think oftentimes our reaction is to try to fight the negative, you know, you see me out there like, I'll post and try to be factual on there. If there's somebody that says something incorrect. Oftentimes, what you don't see is me reaching out to people that post negatively. I'll add them as a friend. And I message them and be like, hey, I see you have concerns about city government, would love, you know, to have a conversation with you. Um, it's funny, sometimes people just read it and don't answer. But at least we tried, because oftentimes people just don't have the facts, don't think they're being heard. You know, so between those things and this, so um I did send this to Aaron this afternoon. He's obviously traveling. Um, he, it won't be in town tomorrow, but he and I are gonna talk on the phone tonight to do our regular. The other thing that I'd like to do is, um. I think even a little bit extra promotion of our meetings that I wanna start at the next time, so just like a simple Facebook post that reminds people that we're meeting. Like, when I do my packet and it gets posted Friday night, Saturday morning, that we would do like a standard, whatever the picture is, and like. Next council meeting, Monday, November third, put a link to the YouTube page, put a link to the packet. And just be able to remind people out on Facebook, like, these are the things that we're talking about and um. It's just another way to to promote what's going on. Um, we have uh the first round of applicants. Uh, people for the finance manager clerk, I had posted the date of tomorrow. Right now, we have three applicants. Um, I have asked Kathy. Uh, Chief Bruce and Suzie will be on the interview committee with me. We're planning to do interviews, probably bring them all in, all three of them. Friday morning, um, and depending on how those go, I may like to ask you to have a special meeting. Um, next week, one day, because I would prefer not to wait another two weeks before the meeting.
Okay.
Or the next meeting, and then if we have these extra bills, maybe we can do that.
That's a good idea.
Um, I don't know that the mayor will be, are you coming back Monday early because of the?
I get back Friday.
I'm just talking about Monday as a regular workday.
Um. Oh.
We'll just have to see. Anyway, what I was thinking about is maybe a a late afternoon on Monday, depending on how far we get, and so if you're not back yet, then maybe you're okay. Tim just running the meeting.
For Tuesday. Don't do Tuesday.
That's how they extravaganza.
Monday, that's what I was saying to do it early.
Tuesday's the date we're looking at?
Well, Monday is the tenth or Tuesday would be the eleventh, which we're ever, like, we're closed on Monday, Tuesday, not that it matters, but.
It's more, I I'm on the eleventh at all, I won't be able to.
I was thinking, because you have normal school, what time, can you meet at four?
Oh, yeah.
So the extravaganza, yeah, does it start till five?
Yeah.
So that's what I was thinking, even if.
I do too, so I have. I have to be there at four, so.
So we can even do three forty-five.
Yeah.
I don't, what time do you get up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can obviously send you whoever we're recommending ahead of time.
Okay.
No, that's great.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
I just think, you know, everybody's gotta give notice and so if we find one of them to be our choice.
Okay.
What else do I have?
Oh, Lisa, are you, are you, you feeling good about your applicants?
Uh, there's, I think, potentially, yes.
Good.
They're not municipally qualified, but that's pretty common. You really just have to find someone that you open, so we've. As you know, really tried to focus on financial skills in this round. Um, congratulations to the cross-country team. I posted that on Facebook. Um, good job to the Heat Brink. Family doing good on that team. They got seventh overall and sixth place for one of the the young boys, and so. Uh, as an individual, so congratulations to them. I also posted good luck to volleyball. Um, maybe once we have three more wins in the column for the volleyball team, that we can invite the fall sports kids that got to stay, I mean, we can bring them. To a council meeting, either the next, one of the next two, and you guys can recognize them. So we'll do that, um, but I did try to post that, and then I think that that is all.
Um, I just wanted to point out that the minutes of all of the other board for mission meetings and our entire packet are so valuable. I agree with Lisa. We need to like let people know who, and they talk about we're not being transparent. You know everything. I mean, Lisa's providing a lot of information in these packets. And we need to help get that message out to people. Um. My mom read it and she was blown away by how much information's in the packet, and so. People that are complaining and say they don't know anything, they're truly not looking anywhere, because it is right there. Um, also, this week, I guess I I got the privilege of presenting the accolades awards for the Historic Preservation Commission. To the nineteen seventeen Lofts and to Root Development with Derek Linnell and Randall Wilson. That was nice. They did a great program. Our HPC is doing great work and I'm really proud of them. Um, let's see. I just wanted to remind people that there's gonna be an open house. At the new house that the students did next, this this Friday, from four to six thirty, I believe that was. Um, also, as you mentioned, the holiday extravaganza is coming this next Monday. Uh, the veterans program is the next Tuesday. Um. Land, I wrote land for some reason. I have no idea why. Oh, it's, did they even take the land tour of the. Land, I wrote land for some reason. I have no idea why. Oh, did they even take the land tour of the.
Janice, Tim and I did.
Yeah. I'd say my little. What I did.
And then I am going to be in at the National Rural Economic Developers Association Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, the rest of this week. This is probably one of my last economic development. Conferences unless things change. So it'll, that's my final. I've won two-year terms, two, three-year terms with their board of directors. So it'll be the end of my sixth year. And it's kind of like a family to me, so I've been a member since two thousand and four, so.
Not gonna get too, I know you.
Not now. I will later.
Okay.
But I'm really excited about the Animal Control Committee. I think they're gonna be great, and. As I read the heart and soul stuff, all I could think is, what can I do to plug in later, so?
I'm the only teen.
Yeah.
You're nineteen, Wilson.
Yeah. Anyway, I I also just want to say, good luck to all of you tomorrow. Already voted, and since I'll be gone, but I just want you to know you're in my heart and thoughts and best wishes. All right, let's see. Adam, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I went to state cross-country.
Yeah.
Went to the YMCA, meet the candidates.
Okay.
Yeah, what night that was. And.
Last week, Wednesday.
There we go.
I remember.
Yes, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Fine.
Well, I walked some plants downtown, but I'm glad those are gone now. That was a full season of that.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Okay. Denise?
I went to the YMCA, YMCA ribbon-cutting, which was very, very nice. I went to their mystery drop and got to watch the. Bright Off Twins go up in the.
Yeah.
Up to do the dropping of the tennis balls. And then I couldn't do it, but they even took them up higher. It's like, geez.
Hundred and ten feet.
Oh, my.
Nice.
Anyway, so I went to that. Like what you said, we did the candidate forum, we did Taco Tuesday events. We, the theater had the chicken and noodle dinner, which is awesome and.
Did they meet their goal?
We did. We got half of what we needed.
It was very busy down there.
We had a new route and it went really smoothly, so we're. Forever grateful. That takes a village to do that, but it's really good. Of course, Brenda Verba is the cook that does the chicken and noodles, so. Went to Shirley Billings Retirement. That was nice, a lot of people. And for the volleyball girls, yeah, they're fun to watch, so I hope they do really well. They have a good chance. And then Perry's Land, and Perry's Land is really amazing, and I I told the people that I saw, I rode my horse back there for thirty years. And always was above the tunnel and not down in the tunnel, but that's an amazing, amazing thing. So it was really fun. It was fun to learn about it and. Perry tried to get me to go walk the whole thing, and I said, it's gonna be dark soon. I don't think so, but yeah. Who knew that all those years ago, but pretty cool. That's it.
Good deal. Tim?
Well, also YMCA ribbon-cutting, their twentieth anniversary, with the mystery drop. Kids didn't even scream going up that ladder.
They did not. They were having fun.
Shirley Billings Retirement as well, which was a nice turnout there. Rodeo Dairy Partnership meetings. Could get trick-or-treat in the trail, just a good shout out to all those that. Set up shop there to to give out candy and just everybody that puts that on, it's always a fun event. I also went to the White's Land Tour there, and then I did move the pepper alley last night at the ice bowl. Very nice turnout, well.
This was one of the best fourth or Halloween times. Everyone in our neighborhood had bonfires. Going in the oil or fires, I should say, going in their driveways and there were so many kids out and and it ended. Like, right about five minutes early, and they just kind of stopped, and it was nice.
I'm amazed at the decorations per se that were out there.
I think somebody commented there might be more people doing Halloween decorations than Christmas.
Brian Bills, do you have anything to add?
So I attended the county supervisor meeting via Zoom, of course, because I'm on the road. And that's, that's it.
Okay. And you'll be back when?
I'll be back for the first meeting in December.
Okay, cool. All right.
But I I want to remind everyone that in between now and our next council meeting. Is gonna be the memorial of Montgomery County Veterans Memorial Court of Honor Veterans Day Program. So if I'd encourage everyone to attend that if they can possibly.
Yes, I did not mention the full name, so thank you for doing that, Brian.
Oh, I didn't hear you mention it. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just, I was lining up all of the events next week, so.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you, sorry.
It's a, it's a great program.
Hey, I'm, you know who the keynote speaker is?
You know what? I I don't. I'm not, I'm not the chair this year. I could have told you last year, but I actually, I think it's probably gonna be Bob Fenterman, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. We have any items for the agenda other than you're looking at Monday possibly as a meeting? If it were gonna be Tuesday, I think I'd get over and say maybe, but. I'll have to see about Monday.
Yeah.
All right, nothing further. I would call this meeting adjourned at six forty-nine.
Good night, y'all.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Yep, thank you.
I'm so proud.